At 6:40 PM, would everyone please rise as we say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under old business, we have audiences for public hearing, ordinance 1307, an ordinance relating to levy and assessment of taxes presented by myself on behalf of the administration. Mr. Hefner? Has this gone through Finance?
Yes, it has.
All right, Chairman Duhae.
Thank you, Mr. President. This one went before the Finance Subcommittee last Wednesday, and the Finance Committee has made a recommendation, creating a nomination to the full Council for passage.
Counselor Duhae moves passage. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Murray. We declare the public hearing open at 6:41 PM. Mr. Sylvia, do you want to have a presentation or explanation on what the bill does?
Sure. Previously, the language stated that the rate would be set by the audited collection rate of the first quarter of the prior year at that level of 1% less. We'd like to move to the audited collection rate of the prior year up to 1% above that or 1% over the five-year average. The language might have said 1% or less, but since its inception, it had been utilized as a 1% or a level or greater by 1%. So we'd like to amend to reflect that. This was initiated by a lower-than-anticipated collection rate from the audit that was done in for fiscal year 2012. What was in the budget for FY13 was a collection proposed or estimated collection rate of 44.5%, and what was audited for the last first quarter of 2012 was 42.76.
That was the actual collection rate?
Correct. Whereas the five-year average was a 44.2%.
The five-year average would have been 44.2?
Correct.
So how does that solve your problem?
Well, we can, with this ordinance, we can go to 44.2% or 1% above that. So we could go, we could take the either-or. We could take the 1% over the last collection rate, which was 42.76, or we could take 1% over the five-year average, which was 44.2.
And this has a, it looks like it has 44.35.
That's correct. That's what's on proposal for tonight's collection, for tonight's levy.
I know that former Counselor Mutter drafted the original legislation. I know that he's here. Have you discussed this with him?
We had a few meetings regarding, yes.
May, do you want to be heard?
Well...
I always like to hear from small committee member Mutter now on these issues because, as you know, you were on the board with him, I think, tailored a lot of this legislation originally because of issues during the previous, the administration prior to your taking office initially.
Yeah, and the levy sheet was a result of budgets that have been, or tax rates that have been passed absent audits, which was not a very good idea. So this requires that. But it also, the reason that we think it makes sense to amend it to an average is because when this legislation was passed, there were no averages because there wasn't a history of the ordinance being in place. Today, we have the history. We have, for some reasons that I can recall, but of course Steve Warner was managing some of the issues having to do with timing of tax sales and that type of thing, but we had a lower rate of collection in the first quarter last year. And the way the ordinance currently sits, if we followed the ordinance as presented and didn't do a five-year average, then the tax rate, instead of being close to a 1% increase, would be closer to 3. And I don't think that was the intent of the budget of this council. So we see that when you have a lower-than-expected collection, there should be some way to average that so that you can maintain tax increases that are predictable. And that's the reason for putting this language in. I'm sure that our former president could weigh in on that if you like, but I think that he probably, he does share that thinking, although I'm sure that he would explain it a lot clearer than I just did.
I'd love to hear from him.
Have you called up Jeff?
It's my levy worksheet expert.
Jeff, Mont, 15, Kent Street. I think the original intention of the '04 ordinance was that an administration couldn't come in and use a collection rate that was just completely not possible and in which to have a tax rate that they wanted to present to the council and to the public. So it happened, so the ordinance was designed so that you just couldn't do it. You had to meet that prerequisite. So this does the same. I mean, I don't recall, I knew the language was a little ambiguous there, and at times we weren't sure whether it meant it was, we could go one up or one down. It seems when I read it this time that it was clearly, you couldn't go, you had to go down. So I think in the past, we interpreted it differently, so it was good to clear it up. It should be, so I don't have any problem with using the average in this case. This, the last collection rate was low. I think it was due to the lack of a tax sale, but I'm not the mayor, so I don't really know. But that would handicap you to use a rate that would be 1% less and really bring the levy up. As long as you're not using a number that is so out of the ordinary, it is an estimate anyway. You know, you don't have a concrete, but if you get the bills out on time, history has shown that the rate has been pretty close to that, so I'm in favor of that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chair.
Does anyone wish to speak in favor? Does anyone wish to speak against? Declare the public hearing closed. 6:47 PM. Restrict comments to the council. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Counselor Lambie.
I just want to be sure that in voting for this amendment, that the council will still have the ability to discuss the actual tax levy and tax rate, have the ability to modify it. And it looks as though it does. I just want to make sure that the council would agree to that in reading this.
What do you mean by modify it? The next, on the next ordinance?
Next ordinance.
Brian, do you have a... The collection rate would have to be within the parameters of the ordinance is the short answer.
Right. This ordinance is, only has to do with setting new regulations on the administration's method of preparing a collection rate. It has nothing to do with what the council then adopts for a levy. And you can then amend as you so choose. So I guess...
How does the collection rate factor into the determination of a levy?
Probably get better off getting Jeff back up here for that. They're all tied together. A lower collection rate would require, as was indicated, if we...
I mean, we're unsynchronized, and that has, that has effect on this process, correct?
Right. Say, for example, as the mayor had alluded to, say, for example, we stayed with a 43% collection rate for this levy. We would, it would require a...
How does that collection rate number, what does that apply to? One of the quarters that we're collecting? Is it the first quarter or the next?
It's the first quarter, yes.
That's the only thing it applies to?
This, the 44 that we're speaking of, the 44.35 is only referencing the first quarter.
Because we've already collected the other one.
Well, the rest is four, then it will be collected in FY14. So the...
Well, there's part of the current fiscal year we're in.
Yes.
We're collecting some of that money this year.
When you're setting this, it'll be the revenue that's collected by the May 31st deadline, 31st collection. The rest of the collections from this levy will be collected in FY14. It'll be...
So is, but what are you collecting? What bill are you paying? Are you paying the current budget?
It will be, it'll be collected in the current year. It will be in the current budget.
Not the proposed budget in July.
No. In FY13, in account number 213, currently with the budget that was adopted in June, you have a budget already for 2013 taxes of $26,818.280. And this is the levy for that, as well as the next three quarters.
The levy matches what was in the budget?
It's a little bit less, actually. What was proposed in the budget was a 1.2 levy and rate increase. This is being proposed, and the next item is 1.06.
Okay. Counselor Lambie?
I just want to be sure, Mr. Silver, that if the council decided, let's say this budget year, not to have any rate increase, so the rate would remain at $15.61, would that amendment to the ordinance we'll discuss later on this evening, would that rate be allowed under this amended ordinance?
If staying at the current rate, the tax rates, it would, it would be under the, because you could go up to, with this, with this ordinance, you could go up to 1 point over the 44.2, which is 45.2, and it would be under that.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Caster.
Thank you, Mr. President. This may have been discussed before, but I need to be clear. What's the reason to make this change? Is there an emergency or why are we talking about this now?
It goes back to the collections that we had from the audit, in the 2012 audit. The first quarter collections from the 2012 audit were lower than anticipated and lower than the town's track record at 42.76%. If we had set, if you were to set the levy going off, say, 43%, the tax increase would be over 4.5%. Because when this budget was done in June, it was anticipated you'd have a 44.5% collection rate. So that difference, the swing from 44.5 to 42.76, would, the lower the collection rate, you'd have to raise the tax levy or the tax rate because of it. So we're now altering the ordinance that would allow the collection rate to rise and the tax rate to reduce.
Okay. So if this ordinance passes, is no relevance or any impact on the levy that may or may not be up for discussion, right? Two different issues altogether?
I don't...
Mayor?
I'm just adding repetitive, but because of the, because of the collection rate that we had in the first quarter of last year, that dictates the tax rate as a factor in establishing the tax rate on the budget that was passed last June. So if we don't make the change and we follow the ordinance, then the tax rate will be higher than what we had estimated. So that, this, by bringing in on the average collection, which I stated before, was in 2004, when we implemented this ordinance, there wasn't a track record in terms of collection rate in the first quarter. Now we have that, it just makes a lot more sense because you don't want to be pushing up the collection rate so you can lower the tax artificially, and you don't want to be in a position where you're hamstrung on a, what historically has been a lower collection rate, and then that pushes up the tax rate. So what we're trying to do is give language that would align with what the budget called for, which was, as Brian said, was a 1.2% tax increase. We're able to bring that in slightly less than that tonight. So the reason for amending it, Counselor, is that if you don't amend it and you follow the ordinance, then the tax rate is going to be artificially high because of a lower collection rate last, in the first quarter of last year. And this gives you, like I said, I'll repeat again, but I think that it's a complicated issue, but by going on an average over a period of time, it gives us, it doesn't give us an artificially high, and it doesn't give us a lower rate. We're able to select in what we've been averaging, which when Brian presents that, you're going to see that it's, that it's really been in a real range, a real short range for several years. But just a move of a small amount does have an impact on your tax rate. Okay? So this helps us align the taxes, the tax estimate increase that we had last year, this helps us align with that.
Now, the current ordinance, ordinance provides for a three-year average?
No.
No?
Just the, what was ordered in the prior year.
Well, there's left, there's language in the current ordinance that refers to...
I think it's just that we, three years of information must be provided.
Now, on this sheet that you just put on our desk, you have the collection rate, it looks like for the last seven years. Is that correct?
That was shown in the history, yes.
Counselor Duhae.
I'm sorry. And I think, I don't want to speak for Brian, but I think this, I believe this applies to the next item we're going to be talking to.
Yes.
Not to confuse the two issues.
Right.
So to answer the Counselor's question, I think it, we've got to realize is there's three or four different terms that we're using. One is the assessment of the levy. Let's not confuse the levy with the tax rate. Or one is used to get to the other one, but one is used, this first resolution we're talking about, 13-07, is just a method to get to our taxable base, if you will. And by our regulations that were passed some numbers of years ago, it's a very unique formula, somewhat complex, but nonetheless, it is a method of taking the tax rate, first year collection, you can only collect, you can only take what we collected in the first quarter. Jeff, I see you moving up front, and this is where I'd like to get you back there because you were the author of this. So if you could do a better job...
We should have, probably have a workshop.
Well, I just want to answer like Mr. Counselor Lambie's question. The thing about the rate is that the ordinance is in place to put some parameters on it, so you can't go crazy with it. Because you can make it 50% and tell everyone it's going to be a 5% tax decrease, and then it, what really happens, happens, and they don't find out that you had a deficit until the audit's done. But everybody's happy when they get their tax bill, now you have a problem. So that was, so the ordinance is there to confine that, to make sure that it's, even though it's an estimate, it's your best estimate.
It's a fairly real number.
Right.
Not made up for political purposes.
There's some his, right. There's some history. Now, if you were to, so it doesn't handicap you, in fact, if you didn't support this and you went on your current legislation, that would handicap you more. You would then, because I don't think the council should amend, or I don't even think it has the ability to amend the rate inside the levy. So your only option would be to lower expenses to make it fit. So if you were to choose to want a 0% tax increase based on any ordinance, your only option would be to lower the expenses to meet, because that's what this levy's doing.
To meet the collection.
It's filling in the gap between what you've collected up till now and what your projected expenses are, and then what are you going to collect in the first quarter? So that's how, that's how you arrive at this levy. So the only way you could do that. And based on the number, if you were using the current ordinance, you would have to cut expenses by over $1 million to make it fit. I don't even, it'd probably be closer to a million and a half if you were going to use the existing ordinance. So that, this, that collection percentage, any small amount makes a huge difference on the rate.
Counselor Cress.
The question about changing the formulation from three to five, is that a matter of convenience to dilution? Or why did you pick five and not six or eight tax periods? And my next question would be, what's wrong with backing into what we're being taxed for now?
I think that the, if I could answer that, Counselor, Jeff didn't pick that, although we did speak to Jeff about the integrity of the ordinance. We just figured that the longer timeframe you use, the more you're going to zero in on an accurate collection rate on an average, in particular when you have either-or. You either have an artificially, either you collected significantly less than you estimated, or it can actually work in reverse if you happen to collect significantly more in that quarter for some reason, which is possible, you know, and I can get into detail on that. But if the banks right now decide that they're going to fully fund all the taxes upfront as they pulled in 2010, they reduce that, the collection in that, in the first quarter by almost $900,000. So you could have it both ways. You could have a spike, and you would have a number that would be significantly higher than average, which is going to cause you some significant problems, or you could have a lower collection. So a five-year average seemed to make sense, seeing that we have that data.
All right. So in terms of risk, could we, don't we have reserves to absorb that $1 million if we did have an anomaly? Could we not fund an increase?
If you chose to reduce the budget that was approved in June, nine months plus into the, into the year that we're managing by $1 million, I wouldn't advise that. I think that that would be very, very poor management in terms of that space. And the repercussions may not be felt immediately, but they would certainly be felt in the next year's budget and following those budgets and some significant tax increases that would go, that would spike it above the, most likely spike it above your caps.
Just a read area where you had said going from three years to five years. On the ordinance, it had stated that the town was required to state the last, previous three collection rates. We're not, it wasn't used, it was just, that was just on there for informational purposes. We changed it to five because you cannot use a five-year average. So the three that was listed on there, it wasn't, they wasn't using a three-year average in the past. That was really just informational. It was just the prior year's collection rate in the audit.
What makes it informational then and not now?
It's still informational.
Yeah.
But it gives you the numbers that they're actually using, right?
Yeah. I would just add too, if you were going to, remember tonight, you're levying on projected expenses, so if you were going to cut the expenses, you need to do that before you levy it because that would be like, that would be like adding to the budget after you levy it. I mean, you're levying for expenses, so that's what the public is expecting. So it was tried one year where immediately after the levy, it was, it was an attempt to add $250,000 to the budget. Well, you couldn't speak against, if you allow that to happen, you couldn't come in front of the council and say, "I don't want you to add 250 to the budget. I want it back in my taxes." So when you levy, you're levying based on those projected expenses, so if you have an inclination to reduce them, you should do it prior to the levy, just ethically, because that's what you're basing the levy. You're levying to cover your expenses. So if you're going to change them, you should change them before you levy it.
So on this worksheet, the projected expenses at 6:30-13 reflects the expenses in the budget we adopted last June?
Correct.
That is the number from that budget?
Yes.
So what we're doing is, you're in the middle of the, like nine months or into the fiscal year of the budget.
Correct.
But we're collecting the money late. Like you use the money, because we're not synchronized, we're always using money from previous years to fund the budget. And if you don't send the tax bill out, you'll end up with a deficit. That's what they're telling you. You lower the tax rate, you collect less than, you're going to have a deficit. And Moody's isn't going to be too happy about that for all you people that made an issue of that during the election last year.
Well, you did go into that, Mr. President. Also, the, we have to transmit the information to Opal for billing by April 11th, so the bills can go out by May 1st, so...
Does this get approved by the Division of Municipal Finance at the state level?
What's that?
Does this go to the state level for approval?
No. That's done in June when the budget's adopted.
Okay.
This is...
So they approve that based on this?
Yes.
Estimated tax rate?
Correct.
What determines the collection rate?
What was the question?
What determines the collection rate?
Well, by this ordinance, ordinance, it should be what you have reasonably collected over the last few years.
No, I don't mean in terms of the...
The only thing I would say is you should not...
What determines the actual collection rate, not theory?
Oh, well, what's...
The levy divided by, you know, what you collected.
Right.
Or what you collected divided by the levy. If you look on that audit page, every year there'll be...
Where's the amount we collected on this?
For example, in the 2012 audit, page 91.
Yeah.
Current year taxes was 25, current year tax collections, so what we collected was
All right.
Now, the levy for the year was $59,203,614.
Yeah.
Resulting in the collection rate of 42.76%.
Does that mean we're only collecting 42% of the money?
Just that quarter.
Of the money?
So that was in that quarter, so that may...
Just that quarter?
In that, that first quarter.
All right.
Or the last quarter of the fiscal year.
So you're actually, if you put it over the four-year period, what would the total rate be? The fourth quarter period, I'm sorry.
Within this levy, when we get to the levy, the next item, the town is still budgeting a, or proposing a 98% collection rate as a whole.
Okay.
This is just for that first quarter.
That's pretty damn good, I would think.
Mm-hmm.
Now, you're indicating that some of the problems that resulted in this number being artificially low is that you didn't do a tax sale, or Mr. Warner wasn't able to do it because he wasn't here?
We, I don't really want to speculate on the past, but we believe that was a factor.
Part of the 98% in our budget includes collections from previous tax years, correct?
Yes.
All right. Counselor Murray?
Just to be clear, it's all driven by that first quarter collection. Is that...
From a prior year, yes. As how the ordinance is written right now, the prior year's collection rate is, we're bound by that in the future year.
So there's no adjusting or anything? That is the way it's figured then?
As it stands right now, it's that prior year. We'd like a little more flexibility with that, and that's why we'd like to use that five-year average. So we can either use that one year, the last prior year, or a five-year average.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
So if you use the prior year collection rate, you're saying in order to balance the budget, we would have to increase the tax rate?
Yes. By...
And collect all this money that you don't need? Is that it?
Not that you don't need.
Wow.
No.
Collect extra money that would...
You have this amount that you have to collect.
Yes.
And the ordinance is saying that you can, when you devise the levy, you can only use 42.76, let's say. It's a math, it's just an equation. If you take what you need, 42.76 of X, 42, okay? 42.76X equals what you need. Then you just do the math. And if you do the math, you're going to come up with a higher rate than you want to come up with.
People are going to pay more taxes.
Now, if you, no. If you collect more than 42.76, you're going to have a surplus.
Right.
If you collect less, you're going to have a deficit.
Okay.
Well, why would you want to use this number that historically is the lowest that we've seen? Now, you might want to be conservative and say, "Well, I don't want to risk it. I want to stay at the 42.76, and therefore I'm going to raise, have to raise the rate to, just in case." Because if it, if it does come in 42.76, you're going to be right on the money, or pretty close. But if it doesn't, either way, it's going to determine a surplus or a deficit. So if you wanted to bring it up based on historical averages, that would seem to be prudent, as long as it doesn't get carried, you know, you don't get carried away.
You don't make it 50%.
So that's the constraint. Right. So you basically take an average so that you can make your best guess, whichever way you fall on it, depending on other factors as to where you're running right now, is going to have a difference, but...
So if everyone paid their taxes in quarterly installments, the collection rate would be 25%, right?
Yes.
Okay.
If everybody paid and everybody else.
All right. Counselor Cress? Questions?
So I'm hearing in between that because of the performance issues of not collecting in a period, a single period, historically, due to tax sales, we weren't following another ordinance to force these people to pay their taxes, we have to raise this to get that money sooner. So we're not going to get that money in this year, is what you're telling me.
Right now, see, the budget's already been adopted where you, within the current budget for 13.
I'm clear on that.
Yep. We have a budget of $26,800,000. With the assessed values that's there, and when you factor in that if you were to use the collection rate of the 42.76, it would then work out to, yeah, you'd have a rate increase of over 4.5%. That's why they kind of swing each other either way, the, whether it be the collection rate up and down the...
So by using more periods, you've...
Well, we have more of a truer...
Down to 1.5%.
We have a truer average on what the...
To make up for what we failed... To make up for what we failed to do in the first quarter.
I don't know, you mean by failed to do?
Well, they're saying that we didn't collect, we didn't have sales.
Well, the taxes aren't required to be paid. That's the problem, see? And what you're, when you're estimating the collection, you're not required to pay more than 25% if you're a resident. If you want to take advantage of the discount, then that's where the difference makes up. And also, a lot of the mortgage companies in previous years would pay all the taxes upfront.
Correct.
And then there was a trend, if I'm not incorrect, that the mortgage companies started paying them quarterly. That's not the administration's fault.
No, it's not.
Right. Mayor?
Yeah, I, I, you know, I just wouldn't describe it as some sort of a management failure there. I mean, would, is a, it's difficult to predict what this economy is doing on people's ability to pay taxes, not pay their taxes. There's a number of factors here, but remember, we're really only talk, we're talking about less than a point and a half on the collection rate. This is not 20% on the tech, collection rate. Jeff and I served on a town council when the collection rate went down to less than 30%. Now, if we, if we had less than a 30% collection rate in any, in the first quarter at any given time, I think that we, I've dropped the ball. We're talking about, you know, a margin of error here inside of a point. You know, so it, it, there's economy factors coming in. And we don't have the li, the liberty to, to, you know, to talk to Steve at this point in time. But Steve was, Steve knew what he was doing. He was managing the strategy based on what he felt as though long-term was in best interest of the town. Uh, and he may have, he may have determined at the time that he was going to run that, that tax sale into the next fiscal year and not in, not in the current one we're in, um, feeling as though that that was, in his opinion, that's the way to handle it. So, but the margin of error here is very, very small. So this is not somehow like he dropped the ball. I'll tell you what will drop the ball, and it has happened before, is if, if somehow there's an inaction and, and we don't get the levy and the tax rate approved in time to get the bills out by April 30th, and then you run a risk, which we have in this town, of getting bills out six weeks late, which drove that 30% collection rate. I can tell you that right now.
And also the deficit that's, you know, prior year because of.
A huge deficit and, and as Brian alluded to, and I think this is part of the conversation that rolls. I mean, this, what we're talking about here is a matter of fairly, you know, simple adjustment into a, into a current ordinance that, uh, that we, we found that there's a, there's a floor in that, in the way it was structured and, and a year we have a lower rate than what you normally would have. But, um, and then some of this conversation would kind of is bleeding into the, into the next, the next part of the agenda. Um, but, yeah, yeah, Mr. President, if you, if you get the, if, if, there's a printing timeframe that we're well within. Um, but if this lingers in, in any way and then the bills go out, uh, time is money in collections and there's no question about the bills go out, uh, that are received on May 1 or in that range, are going to be, you're going to have a higher collection rate on bills that have mailed that way than bills that have mailed on May 18th. And there's a big, big difference in terms of that way that that collection rate.
Also have to spend more money on interest on the TANs, right?
Well, yeah, well, yeah, that goes without saying. Your TANs will, it'll impact your following year considerably in terms of your cash flow. And we're also sitting on TANs right now that are due July 1 that we are counting on this revenue, uh, his, on a historical basis to come in prior to June 30th. So if we, if you delay the bill cycle, uh, yeah, that, that could always, that, oh, that, we place pretty close to the vest in this town. So, yeah, that, that could, that could cause you some problems.
I just have one, Counselor Kearns, question. Actually, by allowing you to raise the rate, it, that, that money could be what people haven't paid via a tax sale. It would work the other way. It's allowing you to lower the rate instead of, if you use the old ordinance, you'd be, you'd have, the people who are actually paying on time would actually be supplementing the people who haven't paid. So the, it's working actually to your, to your, your interest on that point. It's actually working to your advantage that way because if they have a tax sale, that, that could boost up that, uh, you know, your, your previous year collection, which, which would make this less. So it's, it would be in your advantage this way. The other way, it actually forces you to have to raise it higher than, than you would.
Well, I think the bottom line is that this, this is not an ordinance every town has, first of all. This was an ordinance that Counselor Mutter adopted in a time of fiscal irresponsibility, basically, because no other way to put it. In order to ensure that there was no politics involved in the budget process by setting an artificially low tax rate for political purposes. And at the end, finding out this is, these are the, the things that drive cities and towns like, you know, the ones we're all familiar with, into the situations they're in. And we, we're really proposing a modest amendment to what is designed to be a guidepost, if you will, for setting the levy within conservative guidelines. The author of the original ordinance is before us and is in support of it. Anything else? Anybody else want to speak in favor or against? We already declared the public hearing closed anyway, so further discussion?
Mr. President?
Counselor Lambie?
I just want to thank Mr. Mutter for taking time out to be here tonight to explain such a complicated issue. Um, it seems, it seems clear to me, or clearer, I guess I should say, that, uh, you know, this is something that's meant to protect the town from itself to a certain degree and, and as, as Mr. Higgins pointed out, um, prevent politics from, from playing a significant role in, 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 uh, causing the budgets of, future budgets to be unattainable. So, uh, you know, I'll, I'll be voicing my support for this resolution.
Thank you. Further discussion? Counselor Schmidt? Oh, you got your light on, okay. No further discussion, a roll call vote. Counselor Dwyer?
Yes.
Counselor Lambie?
Yes.
Counselor Murray?
Yes.
Counselor DeCosta?
Yes.
Counselor Kearns?
Yes.
Counselor Schmidt?
Yes.
She votes yes, the ordinance passes. Seven to nothing. Thank you, Mr. Mutter, as usual. Now comes the hard part. New business. Resolution R 1321, a resolution authorizing the tax assessment. It's an interesting word that you added there. Tax assessment levy fiscal year 2012, 2013. Sylvia?
I passed out for each of you memo. I'd just like to say before I get started that there are, there is no change within the memo between what was on the agenda originally in this. It was just meant to provide a little bit more clarity and more of an explanation uh, to the town's proposal for, uh, the levy for the current, for FY 13. Within the proposal, the, uh, the administration is proposing a levy increase of 1.53% and a rate increase of 1.06% with a, um, collection rate within the first quarter of 44.35% which would realize a final net levy of 60,469,628. Um, this is an increase over the prior levy of 909,0019, 018. And, um, within the, the resolution itself, it provides for a range of 59,100,000 to 61,100,000. Uh, one item of note also on page two.
So the levy increase is 1.53%?
Correct.
What is the current state cap?
Uh, state cap is 4%.
4%.
The town has a ordinance on the books where it cannot go, have a rate over 3%.
All right.
That's the rate and the, the state has a levy.
That, that, that number, 1.53.
Is a levy.
Is the number that we have to conform to our own ordinance in state law?
No, the, the, they're separate. The ordinance, I mean, the state law is a 4% cap on the levy, where the town is proposing a 1.53.
That's right.
The ordinance the town has imposed is a 3% rate increase where the town has a 1.06.
I don't think that that statute applies to the tax rate, applies to the levy.
I thought one was three, one was.
The state is on the levy.
Right.
And the town is on the rate.
The tax rate, yeah, the town's on the rate, I would say. So they're really two separate things.
Yes.
They are two and they can play against each other, as we've had in front of the council before, where the, um, the state levy was at one time below our town cap. In this case, in this case, it's, in this circumstances, it's higher. So, um, it can change and you have to be aware of both.
Now, account for the difference in the levy increase and the tax rate increases.
That is associated with the.
Is that additional value?
That is correct. The, the value of.
Yeah, I'm trying to start out this, in some of this stuff.
If no change was made, if the rates were remained the same, the levy itself would be up 0.55%. There is an increase in value, um, that, that provides for an additional levy of 327,975. So that's before any rate increase.
Questions?
Mr. President?
Counselor Lambie?
Mr. Sylvia, I just want to be clear and I, I want to be sure that my fellow counselors are clear that if we did not increase the tax rate this year and we left it at $15.61, you're saying that the total taxes would, would still increase, um, for the town by 327,000, even though we would not increase the rate on our taxpayers?
The levy would need, would increase by nearly 328,000, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
The levy, that's not an increase of taxes paid. I mean, it's an increase of the overall total of taxes paid, but not on an individual basis.
Correct.
Right. Because you have more, if you build more houses, you collect more taxes. That's basically a simple version of it. Or if you bring more industry in, or if tax treaties expire, correct? All these things factor into this. Thank you. Counselor Lambie? Other questions? This is not easy to understand and I know that we have four new counselors on the council going through this basically for the first time, other than sitting in the ord, audience, obviously, but.
Mr. President?
Counselor Lambie?
Uh, Mr. Sylvia, if we were to, um, propose an amendment to the resolution in Section 1 relative to the amount of tax range that could be levied and we wanted, um, that range to reflect the current tax rate that the residents are currently paying, do you know what that rate, that range would be?
So you're speaking of with the rate remaining, I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
In, in Section 1.
You'd like the range for if, if the rate was.
If it was, if it remained unchanged, so if it remained at 15.61 per thousand.
Yep.
Uh, what would those numbers be? Do you know, or can you help us with that?
Why don't you explain also why there's a range?
Okay. Um, there is a range, just because again, if, if supplemental bills go out, if, uh, and also abatements, um, so there's a range because taxes will be coming off, um, and new bills will go out. So there is provided a range and because of collections, it, it varies from year to year. But for the most part, it's roughly a million to a million and a half under whatever the, the levy is and about 500,000 over the levy.
Okay.
It's varied on that, but that's, that's about been the average.
But once the bills go out, they're out.
Right.
So, I mean, if you're sending.
But there are abatements, there are.
What are you going to send them? I mean, you say you're on a deadline, a tight deadline.
Yes.
When you send it to the billing company, is that it? What are you sending them? What number?
Whatever is, once, once this is done tonight, um, the tax assessor will be setting the tax rate, the, the levy and will be certifying with the, the clerk and she'll be sending it off by the 11th. So whatever is.
So this range of 500,000?
Yes.
Because if one million down, it doesn't bother us?
That's again due to, say, abatements.
That is due to the time period between now and the 11th?
No, no.
I'm trying to understand why you have a range then.
Because of abatements and, and any supplemental bills that go out and because of abatements that would remove taxes.
When would that happen?
Throughout the year. I think we had abatements at the last meeting. There are abatements regularly.
Yeah, I understand that. But what I don't understand is how, once you send out the bills.
This is ensuring, so at the end of the year, the taxes collected are somewhere within this range. So once the, when all the taxes go out and are paid and any abatement, abatements are gone for.
All right, so let's say the initial tax bill that's sent is for the number on this sheet.
Mm-hmm.
And then you find that, um, because of a decline in assessed value, because of abatements.
Abatements, yeah.
And because of, or an increase in assessed value, you may need to send out a supplemental bill on a particular piece of property?
Well, the, the, the assessor can send out supplemental bills, yes, and that, that'll change the rule, so will abatements. So once, once at the end of the year, we have to be able to come in within these numbers.
Okay.
So that's why.
So for instance, when, when there's a house built in the, in the state, the state law allows us to, once that building permit is issued, issue them a supplemental bill?
Mm-hmm.
That's not included in the package of the original bills?
Right.
All right. Further questions?
Um, Mr. President?
Counselor Lambie?
So do we have a number, Mr. Sylvia, that we can put in the resolution that would basically allow us a range if we were to leave the tax rate at $15.61? Are there numbers that you would be comfortable with?
I, I can, I can give you the numbers, but then I'd like to address that further.
If you lower the tax rate, you have to lower expenses. Did you not understand what Counselor Mutter said?
Okay.
Is that directed at me?
Yes.
Oh, I, I certainly understood Mr. Mutter, Mr. President, but, um, what I'm suggesting is that we leave the tax rate the same, not decrease anything. And I understand that the levy would be $327,000 higher if we leave the rate exactly the same. So what I'm trying to get at is if we leave the rate exactly the same, unchanged from last year and the levy is still expected, our property tax bills are supposed to still go up by 327,000. I'd like to know what that new bill is with the $327,000, what the new total is.
That would, if, if the rates were to remain the same for the FY 13 levy, you'd be looking at, because again, this was, the budget was adopted, that was adopted in 13. You'd be, and, and there was a levy that was, was projected in that. Um, you'd be looking at a projected deficit for next year of $570,000. It would result in a collection rate of 44.8%, which is again, 2% over what was collected last year at 42.76. And you're really, with, with what we do have coming down the plike, with, with the additional expenses next year, with, whether it be OPEB, whether it be the pension issue, the schools, to then, we'd be short nearly $570,000 as, with the result of this.
I don't understand that because you just said that if we went with the rate proposal of 15.77, that we would only be raising $900,000.
Correct.
So, and, and if we leave it the same, we're going to be raising $300,000.
Correct.
It's only a $600,000 difference.
Yeah.
Now all of a sudden, we're losing millions of dollars if we leave the rate the same?
No, I said, we'd be at $570,000 less for next year. And I, and I was just speaking to, in addition to all of the, where the expenses were, that are going to be coming down the plike, before we get to that, we're going to be at a shortfall of $570,000.
We would be at the same levy collection as the current year, which is about $60 million plus another $300,000.
But what was budgeted in the current year's budget was a rate increase of 1.2% and a levy and a collection rate of 44.5. That was budgeted when the budget was adopted in June.
So when you say next year, you're talking about 2014?
Yes.
But last spring, the council didn't approve anything to do with 2014?
Well, they, they adopted the, the 26.8 million that's in the FY 13 budget, which is tied to FY 14 because that's the first collection. Then the next three collections of that year is in FY 14.
Um, the, uh, the budget that was adopted last year, the 40% of that tax levy that was discussed in these chambers last spring was collected before June 30th, 42, 43%, right? So that would mean that the balance of that levy, or about 58%, was collected last summer, last fall, this winter, and now over the next couple of months.
Okay, yeah.
That's pretty much the end of that, that cycle, as it will be. It will end in a couple of months.
That was adopted in June?
Last June.
That, what was adopted in June, that was, that was, um, the, the fourth, the last piece of that budget was. was the rate that you will be adopting tonight, which also affects a good portion of FY14 as well.
The 2014 budget?
Correct.
In other words, what parameters you start with?
Yes.
So you automatically have a $500,000 hole?
Correct.
To fill?
Yes.
In the next budget, not to mention a deficit.
Mm-hmm. So we're pre-nanated?
We're unsynchronized, because, you know, that's why, that's how it works. Well, it's, we're the only town that isn't. It has its advantages in terms of knowing where you, how much you actually have spent, as opposed to guessing. So as you see, he estimated a 1.2% tax rate last June when the budget was passed. It allows him to come back and actually lower that rate, in this case, to 1.03 or 1.06.
Correct, and that's again based on the...
And if you were unsynchronized, you would set the levy at the time of the adoption of the budget.
Correct.
If you were synchronized, maybe. And so we would have, we would have, we would have already put in a tax increase of 1.2% and ended up with a surplus. So in some respects, based on the representations that were made of a 1.2 versus a 1.03, we're already reducing the tax rate that we were estimating back in June, that when, when the public hearings were held. This is, this is really not the place to look at reducing the tax rate. If you want to discuss reducing spending in the next fiscal year, therefore maintaining the tax rate estimate, or, or reducing that estimate, then we're going to have, we're going to need a discussion on expenses and where you want to cut them. And we know we have a lot of obligations that we have to deal with in terms of our unfunded liabilities and so forth. We have a school committee looking for a $1.6 million increase. But to do it during this adoption of this ordinance, which is, has been characterized in the past as a mere formality, to basically put a stamp of approval on the work of the fiscal year, the budget that's already was passed by this council in the previous council, to change that is very irresponsible fiscally. Is there any public comment? Is there a motion?
I'd like, Mr. President, I'd like to ask a question about the synchronization of the process. Why are we unsynchronized, and why don't we move towards a synchronization if it simplifies things?
Could I take a stab at that?
Sure, Counsel Dwyer.
At this point, we're nearly nine months through our budget, so to speak. We're always in, in the rears. My point of view is that we have a better idea of what's going to happen. Let me, let me put it to you this way. How would you like to project what's going to happen in the next two and a half months? Or would you like to project what's going to happen in the next 12 months? Which do you think would be easier for you?
To me, the simple equation is get a process that people understand, and we can spend less time trying to understand it ourselves. So if everybody else is synchronized, and Cumberland is the only town unsynchronized, tells me that maybe we should be synchronized.
Maybe we're the ones doing it right, and everybody else is not doing it right.
I like, I like the idea of knowing what the real number is personally, so, and I guess also, Counsel DeCosta, the cost of synchronization will require us to borrow significant sums of money.
Okay, sorry, so that's, that's a different story.
Thereby increasing the tax rate.
Thirty and forty million dollars that you would have to borrow.
Did you got a makeup for that loss of one?
All right, I understand, thank you.
And that's not to say you're going to have a system that's better, because I think this system is better.
I do too.
But anyway, that's my personal...
We went through this a while back, when former school committee member Brian Kelly, there was an important issue for him, and tried to convince us to, to go synchronize.
I had the same conversation with a gentleman by the name of Peter Schaefer, and some of those may have been in the room, and he started popping his pills by the time he got done trying to explain to me why we were better on the synchronized year rather than the non-synchronized year.
Right. So again, the only option at this point is to approve the tax increase.
Well, unless you want to run a deficit.
Well, you don't want to do that as well, but since the expenses have been approved already, the only way to meet them is to come up with the money.
That's right.
So...
Mr. President?
Yes, Counsel Lambie.
The, the, I'm looking at last year's fiscal, the budget that was proposed for fiscal 2012, 2013. That property tax levy was proposed to be $58.7 million. We're being asked tonight to approve a levy that is 59, between 59.1 and 61.1. And no matter how you slice that math, it's much greater than 1%. And I, I need some explanation on that, because if this council approved a budget last spring for $58.7 million in property taxes, and now this council is being asked and told that we're going to allow for a 1% tax increase that's going to generate $61 million, that's a lot more than 1%.
I think it has to do with the difference between the levy and the tax rate. The total spending or the total collected, if that's the number you're going at, is actually 1.53, correct?
Backing into, this is, the sheet from last year was just pulled from Mr. Warner's file. I didn't alter it at all, but it's, it has a 1.2% rate increase in there, a rate of 15.79%. Uh, 50, sorry, rate of 15.79, a collection rate of 44.5. And that was, again, raising taxes, raising revenue in FY13, the fourth quarter of $26.818, the 280. And that's with the expenses for the year of 82, 82...
So the residential rate, real estate rate in Mr. Warner's estimate?
That's what was projected, yeah, and estimated.
In June was 15.79?
Yes.
And yours is 15.78, 776.
Yes.
Counsel Dwyer moves passage of resolution, of the resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Sent by Counsel Murray, further discussion?
Mr. President?
Counsel Lambie.
I would like to propose amendment to the resolution. I suppose, I suspect I have to wait for that?
I hope this is the proper time.
I would like to make a motion to amend the higher end of the range on line 22 of the resolution, that that amount be changed from $61,100,000 to $59,900,000.
Counsel Lambie moves an amendment to amend the resolution on line 22 by changing the number $61,100,000 to $59,900,000?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Sent by Counsel Schmidt, discussion of the amendment.
Question, Mr. President?
Counsel Kearns.
Counsel Lambie, could you explain why you want to lower it?
The, the audit from this most recent fiscal year stated that our property tax collections were $59.2 million. If our levy is increased just through mere increase in tax base, that would increase automatically, without any rate changes, increase our collections to about $59.5 million. My thought is, is that I understand there needs to be some type of range, and, and I felt that keeping that range within $400,000 of, of that number I just mentioned was a reasonable range.
But the levy calls for a final net levy of $60,469, Counsel Lambie. Your number is below that number. Counsel Kearns, are you all set?
Yeah, and my next question would be, Mr. Sylvia, what impact would Mr. Lambie's decision have?
I think Mr. Higgins just answered it.
Yes.
He could elaborate on that.
I'm sorry.
If this amendment were to be approved by the council, what impact would that have on town finances?
We, it would be a reduction in the levy. Again, our levy that we're proposing right now is 60, $60,469. So that would be, this would be a reduction. I don't have in front of me what that would, how much of a reduction, but it'd be a rate reduction, and we'd, we'd be looking at a deficit.
Do you want to say something there? Or, as Mr. Sylvia, I...
I think Brian did better than I could have done.
All right. Further discussion on the amendment? On the amendment, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Those against? Hey, that fails, 4 to 3.
It was one abstaining, I think.
Want to roll call, Counsel Schmidt?
Yes.
Counsel Kearns?
Yes.
Counsel DeCosta?
Yes.
This is on the amendment?
Right, for the 59,900.
Counsel Murray? Counsel Lambie?
Yes.
Counsel Dwyer?
No.
The chair votes no. The amendment carries 4 to 3. I have no idea.
I'll have to veto that bill. There's no way, you can't manage the town. This budget was passed last year. It was managed as it was passed, and what, what was just, what was just put forward here is an impossibility to manage the budget, because you have to lower the rate below 1.06. That's what that amendment did.
Amendment just put a hole in the budget?
Yes.
Yes, and I will veto that budget tomorrow morning.
I don't, I don't know what the procedure is, but this is a resolution on a levy. I've never seen anything like this happen before.
The, you set the levy, and then the rate follows.
Right.
The council doesn't set the rate. And so we propose, we put in front of you what that levy, that space is going to allow us to, to tax, but we also provide you through the levy sheet what the rate is going to be. So you have no flexibility in terms of when you pass that, that, that piece of, that levy sheet. It's a 1.06 rate based on the, the, the spread on the levy. What I, what I believe just happened is that you, you're not going to be able to do a 1.06 rate based on that, based on that spread.
It's a zero.
It's a zero. And so you kind of got outmaneuvered a little bit by some song and dance up there, and you put the town at risk. So if you want to keep on going on that road, I'll veto that, I will veto that bill. I will veto, veto that, I will veto that, that, that action by the council.
Can the mayor veto resolutions, Mr. Hafner?
Be the first, that'd be the first for me. I've never quite, I've never quite seen a vote that...
That's why I kind of, I kind of believe all along that this levy bill should be in ordinance, because the mayor can veto ordinances.
I, I don't even know what you have in front of me, other than the fact, I know we just created a deficit. That's the first time I've seen a council do that, but I'd have to take a, we'll have to do some research for you.
Yeah, well, you'll be doing it for the mayor, I guess.
Well, no, I'll do it for the department heads or the mayor.
My concern is that...
The other thing that, Mr. President...
We have only authorized the collection of $59,900,000 when the finance director is telling us we need $60,469,628.
This will delay the mailing of those bills.
Delay the mailing of the bills is going to cause us to be in a central Coventry Fire District situation.
Mr. President, may I?
Counsel Lambie.
Please. I'm sure that is not the intention of the four councilmen who voted for this mayor. And secondly, this town has enjoyed $5.4 million in surpluses in the last two years collectively. $5 million. And you're talking, we're talking up here about $300,000 or $400,000 of assessments. Now, the intent of this council's decision this evening appears to be, we're trying to send a message to the mayor's office, and that is that we're looking for a rate increase of zero. The taxpayers in this town have been saddled with enough taxes in the last four or five years, including the last two years in which this town has enjoyed substantial surpluses. Thank you.
Do I get to respond on that, Mr. President?
Sure.
Thank you. First of all, it's, what you pass there, you, you can do anything you want in one fiscal year. It's very easy. The way that we're set up, you, it, one year follows another year follows another year. You heard from the, from the finance director that what you just did is going to put a hole in next year's budget of almost $600,000. So the problem is the lack of your understanding in terms of how the town operates is putting the town in fiscal jeopardy. So that's what, what has happened with that vote. I don't believe that any one of the council members really understood what you were trying to maneuver and manipulate. Anybody who voted in the negative can bring that up right now and, and fix that problem, because it's a serious problem, it's not a small problem. So you walk out, you, you walk out of here, and there's a headline, oh, my God, zero tax increase. Next year, next year, you've got a huge problem. We're talking about a 1% tax increase. That's what was promised last year to the public, and that's what has been delivered by this administration. Anybody who voted in the negative can bring that up for reconsideration immediately. I'd, I'd suggest you do it.
It's the opposite there. You have to be voting in the affirmative.
Right, anybody who voted for that, that's correct.
Mr. President?
Counsel DeCosta?
I am sure that Counsel Lambie had the interest of the town first and foremost when he brought up his point of zero tax increase. I also share that vision of no higher taxes. It's no secret, all these years, we've had the same discussion, and I am not for higher taxes, period. I sympathize with the mayor's position, though. We are ready to authorize this spending. Now we are tying his hands. The town will be, again, in a disadvantage. That's not the way to, to proceed. I suggest that we rethink the last vote, and moving forward, that we definitely make it a point to control expenses on the next budget. At this point, not knowing the protocol of reconsidering, are we allowed to vote again, not to vote again?
Under Roberts' rules of order, within a reasonable...
I just don't like to, to have the town in a position that the finance director won't have any money, not any money, but will be on a deficit.
Under Roberts' rules of order, within a reasonable period of time, a member who voted in the affirmative on the previous vote can make a motion to reconsider. I consider Counsel DeCosta's comments to be a motion to reconsider. Now, Counsel, Mr. Hafner?
That's correct.
The second doesn't have to come from an affirmative vote, does it?
I'm sorry, please?
The second doesn't have to come from the affirmative vote. Is there a second? Counsel Dwyer seconds it. Is there discussion on a motion to reconsider?
What do we, what is...
No, there's a, the, someone who votes...
A motion to reconsider the previous vote?
It's a motion, it's the motion to reconsider...
The motion.
The original motion that was voted on.
It's a motion to reconsider the previous vote, which was, pass your amendment, Counsel Lambie.
Correct, and we're trying to approve.
By reconsider, when you vote yes, you will be voting to vote, you will be making a vote to vote again.
So you can vote on the amendment.
Let me make myself clear once again, Mr. President, that this suggestion, it's only to remedy what has been approved by the council before. We cannot approve a budget and now not allow enough money to cover that.
It's a reconsideration on the, on the amendment to the original motion.
No, this is a motion to reconsider. I think we'll reconsider the motion.
The amendment, not the motion, because the motion is still on the floor.
That's correct, we have not moved the whole question yet, all right? So it's a motion to reconsider. Shall the council reconsider the previous vote? Counsel Schmidt?
No.
Counsel Kearns? Counsel DeCosta?
I say yes.
Counsel Murray?
Yes.
Counsel Lambie?
No.
Counsel Dwyer?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. And now we have before us again... The chair votes yes. And now we have before us, again, Counsel Lambie's motion to amend. On the motion to amend, is there further discussion? Hearing none. Counsel Schmidt?
Yes.
Counsel DeKerns?
No.
Counsel DeCosta?
No.
Counsel Murray?
No.
Counsel Lambie?
Yes.
Counsel Dwyer?
No!
The chair votes no. The motion to amend fails, 5 to 2. On the resolution as presented, further discussion? Counsel Dwyer?
Yes.
Counsel Lambie? On the resolution?
No.
Counsel Murray?
Yes.
Counsel DeCosta?
Yes.
Counsel Kearns?
Yes.
Counsel Schmidt?
No.
Counsel, the chair votes yes. The resolution passes, 5 to 2.
Is he freaking manipulated, that guy?
Counsel, under, you know, I know that we've already voted. I just want to say that we recognize Counsel DeCosta has taken a strong position on, on tax increases and has voted in the past for no tax increase. But I do respect him tonight, and I am concerned with that position as we proceed with the budget process. But I do respect his decision to honor the vote of his fellow counselors last June. Thank you, Counsel. Public comment? Counsel Murray?
I used to be able to call you Chairman Murray, Vice Chairman Murray. I'm just gonna, it's a little problematic when we, you know, when we talk about the levy. That's something that's near and dear to my heart, and though it may be confusing, I think it's a, it's something that you should spend some time on making it less, less confusing. That being said, the sanctity of that is vitally important. So if Counsel Lambie wanted to lower that number, the appropriate thing to do would have been to amend, reopen a budget a long time ago and make those expenses. When you do it tonight, you give no one an opportunity to come and speak for those cuts that you would make after you already voted in the levy. So in a, in a transparent way, if you were going to reduce the highway department because you lowered that levy, no one could come here and speak against it, because they didn't know you were going to do it. You should, when you set that levy, it's got to meet the expenses of the budget. You want to change it, go through the budget process and amend those numbers, because other than that, no one has an idea what you're doing. And on Monday night at 5:30, whatever time it is, 6:30, and after these deliberations, you can come in and you can make that happen. And that's not right. So, it's, and that's vitally important. I would argue that, you know, tonight is one of the most important things you do. And certainly, given that ordinance prior, the due diligence is certainly the right thing to do. And, and knowing what you're doing here, yeah, this is not a, you know, this is a serious issue. This is a serious vote. And so I get what your intent was, but you've got to be better. You really have to just be better, and, and that's not a problem. But you, you've got to let people know where those, because if that, if that amendment had not, had not been voted down, you would have been forced to be, you know, to reduce expenses somewhere, and you would have no real opportunity to not do it.
Basically, two months period left.
And you would have had to do it, and no one could speak against it, because you've, now you've already levied it. You've, you've boxed it in, so, you know, that was my point at the beginning, where I, where after we set the levy one time, you want to come in and add expenses. Well, by that time, I already taxed you. I can't, maybe you didn't want to spend the extra quarter of a million dollars. Maybe you wanted some tax relief. I already sent you your bill, so, so that, you know, that's, and I wasn't on the council, but I spoke against that. So I mean, there really is that sanctity there, that when you pass the levy, it has to, it has to balance with those expenses, as Counsel DeCosta said. And if you don't, if you want it to be less, which I would have, you know, depending on what they were, I may have had some discussion on that. But, but I'm really here, to be honest with you, I'm, I'm not here representing any other than the fact that there's a lot of work that went into that ordinance in '04, and a lot of work that previous counselors and, and really strong finance directors worked with over that time. And it's, it really is not something to be joking, joking around about. Thank you.
Thank you. Further public comment? The chairman, oh, Chairman Bill.
I also wanted to thank Chairman DeCosta. I really appreciate your efforts in reconsideration. The, the district, I think, would have been impacted by Counsel Lambie's resolution and his budget amendment. I think it would have been completely appropriate, inappropriate to do that to the district when the district has worked very hard with the administration and with the council, the former council, to truly try to address student achievement, and to do this at the 11th hour without any notice, as the chairman has stated. I think is, it's short sighted. And the phone works both ways. You certainly could have called any one of us, counselor, and expressed any concerns that you may have had. Thank you.
Well, we don't know if any cuts could have been made in that period of time, but certainly, there would have had been some sort of emergency if we wanted to at least try to avoid that deficit that Mr. Sylvia indicated would be coming. But in any event, we've debated it. The motion's, it's over. Public comment? The chairman?
The chairman.
By Counsel Kearns, second by Counsel Schmidt. All in favor? Those against? Passes 7-0. The meeting of the adjourned, 7:55 P.M.